All right, we'll call the Marx Planning Commission a meeting to order. Before we start the meeting, I want to welcome two new members on the Planning Commission here, W. P. and Tim Murphy. They're no strangers to the community and the city and certain on board, so we do thank them for joining us. It's interesting when to make your first one, but we do welcome you on the board. All right, the roll call, we are all present, so we'll start pleasantly.
Congratulations to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we will have one public hearing tonight, item number four, so when we get to that one, there's a sign in sheet there, anyone who wants to sign up, we will go through that. Changes to the agenda, like item seven has been just pulled to the next meeting, so we'll take that up at the April meeting. Any other changes? All right, approval of the meeting agenda, so that will be items one through six for tonight. A motion? Sorry.
Because we got two new members, Ms. Eller with the vice chair, we need to appoint her. We gotta need to get a new vice chair.
Okay, we'll do the agenda, we'll add that to the agenda, we'll do that. So we got a motion to approve the agenda with the one item added, you got a second? Got a motion, second, all in favor, say aye. Any opposed? All right, we'll start off with that then. I'd volunteer for my most big chair too, we could vote for both. So vice chair, we have any nominations for the vice chair? So was that your official nomination? So we got a nomination for Hudson as vice chair, if we got a second? All right, all in favor, say aye. Approval prior minutes, we have two sections of minutes, there was a study session on the February 14th prior to the regular meeting, so we got the regular meeting, meeting minutes, and the study session meeting minutes. Have any motions for those?
Question on those minutes, Ms. Eller was chairing that, can you sign up for her, I don't know who the gal is about.
I think she said she was. Before you got here, she was here. We got a motion to approve, we got a second? Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. All right, individual review of agenda items, so we'll start with item number one, someone in phase one, it's a one-year bond extension.
Yeah, I did just a brief inspection of that section, and they have replaced curving. There's still alligator cracks in the street, and they hadn't requested a reduction as yet. They're in the process of getting a inspection, but I recommend a six percent increase.
And don't they still have a buffer to put in?
Yeah, they still ask for more.
Well, that bond amount would be two oh seven eight sixty-six. Have any questions? You have a motion? Motion is second, approved, all in favor, say aye. Item number two, this item was deferred from the January 10th meeting, Jackson Farms, Dewey Engineering, request final master development plan approval for four hundred twenty-eight single-family lots and open space. This is Bill Moss, and Calista Road, the properties on suburban residential planning development. Seajust, you want to give us another day of the changes since last meeting?
They've added some amenities to the site, they had a swimming pool amenity, as you can see in staff plan. It sits, I think, on the western side of the development at across Bill Moss. They also shifted some, increased the buffer, still at the required twenty-five foot perimeter, that still is intact, but they also went to the thickest of the buffer, as I explained in my notes, to the, I guess it's the V-two transitional yard, and I had an explanation in my notes, or in the zoning ordinance, that tells the differences of the shrub, underbrush, and canopy shown on there.
So that was the major changes since last time. I know this was the one that we had question about last time, about when the Board Mayor and Alderman approved it, the rezoning and the former master plan, there was a reference to agreements, and Valerie, does, can you give us your input on that?
Well, my understanding is that the Board Mayor and Alderman approved the rezoning, and I think that Alderman Decker's comment was just that, you know, if there are things that we can do to help make the community around the area, you know, make this more amenable that staff, that he helped the staff and the developer would do those things, but as far as approving these plans, I mean, if they need our apartments, we have to approve those plans.
Because yeah, typically the final master plan is more of an administrative stage, unless there are big changes when the preliminary is the final.
Right, and you know, I mean, I don't, well, I don't think.
But was this for rezonations, Seajust?
This was made.
I remember we talked last too about volunteer, with one of the groups, because we went through the group, and one of those connection to volunteer.
Yeah, we talked about the connection from volunteer, and I think we discussed the Swearingen House and staff, I mean, the traffic was going to go flow onto Wilkerson either way, and with the volunteer connection, the sidewalks along the neighborhood of to Calista were one of the takeaways because of Bill Moss, and, you know, if not being a, you know, through-street connecting, you know, dead-ending at the interstate, that was a reason, you know, rationale for asking for the sidewalks alone, built along volunteer to extend to Wilkerson, and then with the Calista Road plan of services that, you know, those sidewalks would connect into that, you know, and create some more sidewalk space that way. That was the rationale for the volunteer, plus it was a stub out there, that was our reason for, you know, having that connection.
I had one person say that they were, had heard that we would go require a bigger buffer, and they were impressed with a bigger buffer.
If they're going for B-one, did you say B-one?
Yes, yes, sir, B-two, B-two.
B-two? What improvements being made to Bill Moss Road?
I can let the engineer speak too.
I'm Michael Dewey with Dewey Engineering. The improvements to Bill Moss Road for the traffic study, all of the improvements are being made for the traffic study, and that is to widen Bill Moss Road to Collector Street.
Does that include sidewalks, I seen?
So during the rezoning process, and Seajust, I don't know if you want to speak?
Yeah, sidewalks, those were the offset sidewalks, to be on. One thing we did, one thing we did talk about was the fact that, you know, the subdivision is split with Bill Moss, and there is, you know, people would have to cross the street, you know, maybe on the plans, and we'll catch that in construction plan, but we're probably going to crosswalk, this is in a state road, mid-block crossing doesn't make a difference, maybe provide some crosswalk patches for safety.
And our package, we didn't have any of the house plans, was that something was approved to approve?
They, I think because this came twice, and I think we did include it in an insert, but the house plans were included, that's the amenities. Well, I think, I think there was some, on my part, I think there was some confusion as far as the elevations, I think they were included in your package when we pulled it a couple months ago, but they haven't been reviewed. Just want to make sure that they're going to be written great and adherent to the design standards.
Any other changes, Seajust, on between preliminary, final, or the twenty-seven?
You know, I'm happy with the traffic study. Also, for me, I mean, there are other improvements that we're talking about along with Calista, they're going to go on with it, but yeah, they're coming and everything, they're finessed it.
So, questions that opened up a whole new can of worms here to me, it might not be everybody else, we're talking about traffic study, there have been thoughts and things put in place to get all these people out of there after the interstate through Wilkinson Lane, Volts Hill Drive?
Yes, yeah, that's what the traffic study sort of constitutes, the warrants and the traffic study.
And it's all good.
They have to be done at the preliminary phase.
Yeah, we'll learn which comes chicken and egg.
Yeah, and I, you know, they include that, include the traffic studies, if you'd like to see them.
Some of these groups, I remember some of them were about construction process, like burning, equipment, during the discussion of rezoning.
You know, some of that's OSHA requirement, like the truck backing up, the beefing, and some of that's sort of, it's federal law, that has to, you know, be in there, and burning, I mean, that's in our municipal code, so some stuff in there would kind of go against our code, so.
That place probably doesn't have that much clearing to be done on, does it, especially up on all of the farm lane?
Yeah, the work they're doing, I think they're doing right now, their land disturbance is what they're doing now, but yeah, it's not much clear, not much free.
It's not like some of the other tree paths that is in the forest.
Cold frost in right now.
Any other comments?
So, all these concerns that are in this letter have already been addressed by the board, and everything that relates to these, we keep you from being doing, being able to do a lot of these, are within the codes that this subdivision is set.
What he's asking, have we looked at the grievance, so there's a phrase here more often called vested rights, so once the preliminary plan is approved, and a HUD is different than just a rezoning, so the HUD is tied to the HUD of the plan is the zoning, so between preliminary and master plan, the only things that can change by law, by state law, the city can't ask, you know, for greater change, something even unreasonable, by state laws called vested rights, so that's sort of, you know, what we're tied to, so in the preliminary process, that's when you have to catch every, any and everything, anything major, lends the city to the lawsuit.
Well, and one of the examples I could be, our forty recommendation, like our forty, that it's already been zoned as a HUD, with the particular dimensions of the lots, that already approves, so for us to go and change it to our forty at this point, this, first of all, this board wouldn't have the authority to do that, it would have to be the Board Mayor Alderman that have to change it, and it'd have to be a request from the landlord, nothing new.
In a perfect world, it's easy to see more, a lot of these things, if I live close to anything new, I'd want a lot of this done. And I guess the reason I'm bringing that up is to, is to question, has everything been done that can be done, decisions made, and, and you can't really incorporate any of these concerns.
One thing for you all, I know you report the Calista Road status, I know that's like a multi-phase deal, the city may want to give them about that on the Calista Road improvement.
Yeah, there's a three-phase approach over three years, so when we end it's a piece of property in, we have to do what's known as planned services, and so one of those planned services is what we deal with this, in Elmond Jerry, I'm thinking of this, but from Indian Ridge to Wilkerson, one phase will be done, then Wilkerson to Bill Moss, and then Bill Moss, Bill Moss to the city limit line, will be improvements to the roadway, whether it's widening sidewalks, improvements, so that has to be done by, I mean, because it's annexed in, and it's, you know, legally bonded document under the planned services, and so the city has that, and CIP will have that in the CIP over a three-year process, so I think that gets at attempting to address some of the grievances with the, you know, the traffic volume on Bill Moss, I mean, Calista.
I mean, Bill Moss is already paved recently, when we put our, we expanded our sewer system, it's been paved, but like you said, they're going to redo that, as you mentioned, the first phase of focusing on Calista is from Wilkinson Lane to Bill Moss Road, and I've asked in my CIP budget, my capital unit project budget, to start at least a design phase next year of that section, each section will have to go through a design phase, they'll have to go through a right-of-way utility possibly movement phase, and then construction phase, so each of those, each of those three phases will have three phases, it's going to take us a few years before we can get all that done, but it'll take quite a money, we could have, one, the one project is, has been required, and you give us five hundred thousand dollars, that would be the, what does it say on there?
That's Calista Farm.
Calista Farm, that one's going to give us five hundred thousand dollars to help us in our endeavors to start making it, growing a little wider, hopefully with the sidewalk, at least on one side of the road, it'll be green, so that's our plan anyway, when they take our engineer, hopefully the money is available this year, we're going to get that, at least the design stuff.
Any other questions about grievances at the point? Seajust, on that homeowner association guy, would you usually see those coming in?
Uh, in the plan.
For you new members, that's another phase, you'll have to approve this there, when they come up with their final plan, you'll have to again review that, make sure there was no major changes to that, because if there is, then it's got to go through another process, but hopefully seeing this again.
Any questions or comments? Any type of motion?
Make a motion, and then further Jackson.
Got motion to approve, we got a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Yes. All right, item number three, White House Sports Bar, request site plan approval for seventy-three hundred forty square-foot restaurant, Sports Bar, it's located at Seajoue, I guess it does have an address yet.
No, it didn't have an address, this is going to be a seven thousand two hundred forty square-foot sports bar entertainment complex, this is the first, I think Jason and I talked about the site plan, and after we looked at it, talked about it, it's probably one of the cleanest ones we've ever seen, but then, of course, going back, you sort of see things that, you know, could possibly be changed, but I think some people had a question about the driveway entrances, you know, being too close together. Three hundred foot for Collector Road, is the width in home driveways being close together, that's something that we can certainly look at and maybe limit any access to Seajoue. Their engineer, their, the owner is a nurse practitioner, and I told her that if we needed to call the engineer, we would, but given that this was site plan approval, we could, you know, pass along any comments to them. The selling agent is here if there was a question.
What's the separation between the two drives now?
I couldn't, I couldn't give a determination on that, based on the measurements, because it's not to scale, I mean, basically what I was measuring with, but we'll certainly look at that, and if it's too close, we'll catch that in construction design.
It looks like the property's two hundred seventy-eight feet.
And I did try the measurement to get that, but we'll.
This is the best thing, but we passed sheets on the scale.
Kept getting like five inches when I did the measurement, so.
Is that the city's driveway standard?
The what they have here now, no, it's not, but same thing, I mean, we gave them comments on some of that stuff, to get them through this phase, and made it, you can see that there are a couple things that need to be worked out.
That's the T-DOT standard, I mean, you had to basically come to complete stop on the road to pull into them, you know, they'll take a beating, but they're not the best for our turn movement, so.
So this, this is the first phase of overall approval of this project, is that right?
This is it, site plan, yeah, because it's about right, but we're ironing out here, the way the site sits, making sure parking there with drainage, and then it goes through another process with construction plan, so those are things that, you know, if, I don't want to use the word missed, but if it's something that's not addressed on the site plan, it gets called in, construction plan, I think, would be, but the, you know, turn radiuses for trucks, parking lot width, parking lot, parking stalls, number of handicap spaces, those are things that we look at.
Will that come back then here?
No, ma'am, once it, once we pass, once, once it's passed here, then, you know, they're ready to move into construction phase, that, that takes a, that process does take a little bit of time as well, so once this passes, depending on their budget, it could be six months that we'll be seeing this out of the ground, it just depends on the engineering and developer.
And when you say about right, you mean it was already?
It's already zone C two, so they're not asking for a rezon, they're just asking us to make sure this site, we're looking at the way the site sits, and it's meeting our subdivision slash zoning regulations.
So the site plan is the only thing that has to come before the board, and you guys?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because they're not subdividing or creating any new property here, it's existing law, just a basic site construction. Do you have any of the elevations for the building exterior?
Yes, they should be there.
Seajust, you think you look at?
So Seajust, Seajust.
The front parking lot that's blocking the, you see up there in the parking lot?
At the top? We're going wide and saved, so I don't, I didn't see any right-hand right out.
I missed, they've got one part of their parking lot that's close up there to me.
Oh, oh, that was, I'm not sure, that, that was one of the things, we gave a comment on that, but I'm not sure what the intent is, but it sort of looked like a meeting, it needs to be finished. I don't, I don't think it was intended to be Friday night out.
I mean, that's what, that's the only reason it would be there, to me.
Of course, on the elevation, we got the signage of the lettering on the sports bar, but they had submitted the sign application and placement.
Is there any questions or any stipulations to, it's pretty straightforward, another question about the access?
One thing I'll make a note, you'll see where, you can see like a, some type of entertainment or activity back there, I did get confirmation that it's going to be an ax role, so. I mean, yeah. No, that's what I was told, it can change, it can be a moment, but I don't, I think it's going to be.
I don't know, this doesn't, doesn't matter, is this a, like a local change, or is it one on?
Yeah, it's an individual.
Any other question, I hope there's questions about the driveway, the design, the moving out, and the radius on the entrance, or anything else we have questions we could send? All right, we'll do a motion. Motion approved, we got a second? Motion is second, all in favor, say aye. Brady, carry it. So item four will be a public hearing, I will, Seajust introduced this, then we'll call people up for the public hearing. You want to introduce it? No, we'll let you introduce it, then we'll call the people up for a public hearing.
So this is Raymond Hurst, Townhomes, Canadian born engineer, it's been before us a couple of times, they were ready to take it to Boma, but, you know, it was denied, and in the state that it was in, it would have to come before, planning commission before it can go to Boma, so that's why it's back before you again. They wanted to do the right thing, follow the process the right way, there are, they removed a few buildings, I think four, four buildings total, three or four, two along the front, if I'm saying that right, and then two along the back, to sort of still create that buffer, I think, and they can speak to this better than me, but I know you guys asked for commercials, but one of the comments that I did receive was sort of the confusion of sort of keeping the park filled alone, Raymond Hurst, but adding, you know, adding the commercial would take away that, that buffer, so I think that may be some comments to make in the dress. But that's the reason it's back before us again, because there was slight change sidewalk, there is, yep, there is also sidewalks. And again, I mean, I think Elmond's been here to, we've got to speak to it, if you got any questions, we'll answer any.
Well, we'll do the public hearing right quick, and that way the vote representative can answer any questions that might come up.
I met with Ms. P. and Mr. Murphy, just to kind of give them some flavor of, you know, reasons, you know, why, you know, project will come back, so.
They do have seven people, I think six people signed up to speak, we just request you keep your comments to three minutes. We'll go ahead and start off, Debbie Webb, the first one signed up?
I'm, you don't want the developer to go, or, I'm happy to go, but.
Yeah, we'll let you all speak first, in order they were signed up.
Hi. Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you again, and it's nice to meet the two new faces. My name is Debbie Webb, my mother is the owner of the property at twenty-nine forty-five Highway thirty-one W South, where the greenway comes beside the house, and the key reasons we oppose rezoning, high-density development would change the basic character of the area and take away one of the unique qualities that we still have at White House. The infrastructure is not designed for high-density development. The developers submitted their requests, but our mother didn't receive notice until Friday. Due to the continued effort of the developer to try and persuade the planning commission, it seems there's a lack of respect given to the decision made at numerous meetings. A package can be wrapped many ways, but the content stays the same. We feel that this commission has viewed this project with the citizens in mind, allowing other approved projects to conclude and see the impact that will be felt thus. thus causing us to feel no need for a process of circulation of a petition for a united opposition, not to mention even having enough time to complete before this meeting, since it seems to be a revolving door, each time with a decision made, but continually challenged by the developer. We remain with the same opinion as all other times. This property is better served with a commercial zoning, giving chance for retail business to be given opportunity for success and residents of our growing community variety. Many properties are and will become available when or if additional planned unit developments are needed at a later date. But only this parcel at the time can offer commercial business to be a forethought instead of an afterthought. Last but not least, we desire that the stress level on our mother be minimal, with respect given based on principles and protocol in hopes of knowing a time in which this should end. Numerous services by, um, by the developer, they, they do have numerous services, dedicate, they're dedicated to continuing success of their clients. It's a job to them, multitude of services. More than one hundred offices across the U.S., five thousand staff members adapt and adjust. Why Himley Horn clients and employees are at the forefront of our business? Former President Ed Vic said, "We have no reason to exist except to serve our clients." And my quote, money. Public service ethics, as a planning commissioner, you wield considerable power over how your community grows and develops. With this power. Okay.
All right, I hope it was last name Dawn.
Sandra.
Yes, Sandra.
Well, I think a few of you recognize us by now. I'm Debbie's sister and this is my mom's property, mom and dad's property that we're talking about. And, uh, back in December, one of the letters we submitted, we had spent, uh, the city was running out of room for prime commercial property. So I understand that many developers are not even started on their approved projects at this time. It appears the city's potentially taking on too much too quickly, has been said by several. We'd like for all to consider revisiting this after the projects that have already been approved before we decide to bring on even more residential housing. You know, there's a letter, Seajust, you'll recognize this, this is your planner's corner. Stakes in here in this edition of the planner's corner, I'll focus on what, how, why long range planning is created. When a community will look well into the future depends on decisions made today. The twenty forty long range plan is intended to be a policy guide for the city of White House to use in decision making for transportation and land use development that aims to leverage growth, development, and investment to make the city a socially and economically vibrant community. I could stand up here, I could use a lot of fancy words, but when it comes down to it, you know, it's, we're gonna simplify it, but it's not because we're simple minded in White House. We're very educated and we know what we want for our city in advance. As my sister said, you can take the same gift, you can wrap it up anyway, it's the same gift. With all due respect, you know, it's not the city nor the residents fault the amount of money that has been invested in this project. At this point, it doesn't change anything that we've said earlier. You know, you have the old joke where the husband gives the wife a gift, no offense to any men in here, and it's a gift that really she doesn't want, it's for the man's benefit. It may be an appliance. The thing is, this is not a gift we're asking for at this time. It doesn't matter how you wrap it up, we come back to the same thing, what's needed in the city. We know you take a lot of power and we know, basically, the P in planning commission for you guys is the pivotal professional perceptive pathfinders progressing and partnering the population, providing positive, protected, potential prosperous parameters, presenting paramount possibilities. We know you got an awesome responsibility and we respect that. We just ask that, this family represents a lot of citizens in White House. This space, what it may be, represents almost a hundred years on the property alone that I'm speaking of. So with all due respect with everyone in here, we ask to go back to the simple premises.
Next signed up Nikki Taylor.
Hey, I'll be quick. Um, I got a list of developments that have already started just in the last three years on both Robertson County and the Zonard County side. We are looking at forty-five hundred units that have been approved just since twenty eighteen. Um, put together those forty-five hundred units, the highway project that's going to be going on for at, at least three years up here and fifteen in total. Currently, we have thirty-one W is backed up with traffic. I sixty-five is backed up with traffic. Uh, Raymond Hirsch has traffic, seventy-six has traffic. Uh, Calista Road now has, uh, construction traffic. Uh, what did I see today? Several dump trucks, semis, and concrete trucks. I, I honestly believe that a moratorium needs to be done until many of these projects are completed. We're looking at adding another hundred and twenty-five units on thirty-one and Raymond Hirsch, where on any given day, you, you can't get through thirty-one W. I don't know what the traffic study looks like for this project. Um, I do know the traffic study done for Jackson Farms was incomplete. So my personal opinion is that this needs to be put on hold until much of this other building is completed, until these roads are completed, because otherwise, we're gonna end up with Calista under construction. Thirty-one W is set to be repaved, um, certainly down towards Millersville, I believe also of this direction. Uh, seventy-six is a nightmare and it's not getting a stoplight until twenty thirty-five. And the freeway. So considering that we are on an exit, we need to take all of these things into account as we're looking at new developments. So my request is that this be denied until our infrastructure can catch up. Thank you for your time.
Mike Wong.
It's been a minute since I've talked to you guys, but, uh, just a couple of things. It's hard to follow these three ladies, they said quite a few good things, but, um, I'm not against growth, never have been. I understand it's gonna happen, but I'm for managed growth. And at this point in our town, I believe we have far overgrown what we should have done. Um, like Nikki said, we're forty-five hundred houses still unbuilt. We're sitting at a crossroads of thirty-one and seventy-six, they're both state roads. You know, if you want to get, if you want to go state road and anything done on it, you're gonna ask the state and you're gonna answer in four years. You know, it's, uh, I, I've, I've said for the last several years that we need to pump the brakes. We're gonna be in trouble soon. So is the water treatment plant, plant, what are we still eighteen months from finishing at least? Uh, I still haven't been able to find out what we're peaking at as far as production each day, but I know it's getting close to what we're, can currently hold. Uh, I know we've had problems with the T-deck already. But, uh, guys, we don't, we don't need anymore. We don't need more single family dwellings. You're looking at doubling our population from this current status in the next eight to nine years. And if we can't fix our infrastructure problems before that happens, we're in a lot of trouble. I mean, we can't even hire police officers. And, you know, if we can't hire police officers and we can't hire firemen, how are we supposed to control, you know, what we need to control, what we need to handle? The more people we have, the more, you know, our crime's great, but the more people we have, it's inevitable. If we can't have the number of officers we need to take care of and the number of firemen we need to take care of. So, you know, um, I, I've never in my life seen, I, I've been around this block a long time. I've dealt with Metro, I've dealt with Bull'sville, I've dealt with White House. I've never seen a developer come, been able to come back this many times and be told no this many times and they're still coming. So, you know, let's put our foot down and say no and, and, and let's have some, you know, I don't know if it was Alden Hudson that said we needed more commercial, uh, eating before last, but we need more commercial, you know, we need, instead of having another hundred and twenty-five houses, which is another two hundred fifty cars and hiring many more people. So, um, you know, so, uh, but yeah, it's time to stop. So, um, and I'm gonna be helping them push to stop, so I appreciate the time.
Paula Nash?
Okay. Paula Nash, I'm the listing agent. And, um, I'm from White House. I went to school in the school. Billy Harms was my principal. And, uh, I wanted to give you a little bit of background because I grew up across the street from twenty-nine twenty-nine Highway thirty-one W. My mother had a little grocery there that I'm sure Tim knows about.
She's from the school bus.
And, um, and I'm very familiar with the family that originally had it, the Harrisons, back to the grandmother, uh, Parthenie, Vera, her two children, Roy and Limo. And, um, because they frequented the store quite a bit. Um, we, I began this back in two thousand and twelve. That's how long ago that this has been going on, for ten years. Pat and Austin Jones, uh, they were told that there was not a clean deed to the property, which was amazing because they got paid for the Raymond Hirsch Parkway being cut, the cut through. And then, uh, they've been paying taxes on it. Long story short, to tell you how nice Pat and Austin Jones paid for Limo, the youngest heir to the property, fifty thousand dollars while she was in a nursing home, the money out of their pocket. And they also consulted with an attorney who charged him twenty-five hundred dollars, Cynthia Fitzgerald, and didn't get a clean deed to it. Then they had to, went to another attorney, paid five thousand, and he didn't get a clean deed. So with that said, um, Lynn Haydenwood, I'm sure you all are familiar with him. He's Robertson County Assessor of Property. Tom Miller, who was my commercial at the time broker, and the former mayor of Franklin, went with me to visit with Lynn. And he told us the city of White House was trying to give the family who had inherited, Pat and Austin, to donate it to the property, the property to the city for a park. They also were called by the city of White House, Pat and Austin, again, and asked if they would donate the property. How many of you would donate sixteen acres commercial property? Help me to understand that. So anyway, Tom Miller and I met with a closing attorney who represents Benchmark, and he did free of charge for Pat and Austin and got a clean deed to the title. So with that being said, that's when I listed it, Catherine Andrews and I listed it, March of, uh, the twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-one. I'm gonna be very honest with you, I'm embarrassed. I grew up up here and it was a very nice town that someone, and I've been told someone from the board wasn't present at the last meeting, called in and said that he would not even vote if they wanted to put the Taj Mahal on the property. This is sixteen acres, this isn't a lot of property. Okay, thank you, and I'm embarrassed.
All right, thank you, Catherine Andrews.
Hello, thank you for having us here and taking the opportunity to let me speak. I'm working with Paula, I'm co-listing the property. And I've sold Elmington another site in Franklin, Tennessee, that kind of went through some of the same rebuttal because Franklin is, we felt that it was, and I live in Franklin, we felt it was stressful to add more housing units. But then you get, we see so much growth and now that Nashville's booming at the seams, that just spills over to White House, Franklin, and all the areas around it because of Oracle, Facebook. I mean, technology's growing, everyone's coming here. Nashville's getting another two hundred thousand people, that's just been recently announced last month. So as you can see, this overgrowth isn't just affecting White House, it's affecting all of us. When I walk my little street now in Franklin, I'm walking between massive buildings that weren't there. Growth is just part of the chaos and I'm just here because I'm pro for the project. I grew up in a small town, I live in a small town. It changes just part of the growth and how we prepare for our children and grandchildren, since that they have everything, education, grocery, everything around them. And that's why I'm pro for this project. Every town needs housing. And the more housing you get, the more commercial will eventually come. Because we've been told no by Target, we've been told by big box retailers for this site because you don't, there's not enough rooftops. And I've been told that over and over by the big box retailers. They need more infrastructure in White House before we'll come. So I'm pro White House, I come here, I support Paula, I support Peter, I do support Elmington. Because they, Elmington knows how to work with small towns and they do an incredible job. They're young, they're smart, they'll do whatever you want them to do, they'll create more buffers. You tell them what you want and they'll, they'll create it. You want more parks, more places to walk dogs, they'll, they'll make it happen. So I'm pro for this project.
All right, thank you. So that's the people signed up for our, uh, of a hearing. So I guess next we would open up the developer, if they want to do any presenting of the changes since the last plans and we'll open up for the permission comments and questions.
Thank you all very much and thank you for everyone who spoke. You know, I, I feel like a lot of time there's a stigma around developers, um, as people who just want to get rich and make money at whatever the cost may be. And that couldn't be further from the truth for Elmington. And I think the product that we developed is emblematic of that. We don't develop for sale, single family residential. We develop for rent, single family residential. And we do that because in an environment where it's becoming more and more difficult for people to buy a house, you know, we want to give them options in a nice place to live, close to a public, close to a park, close to schools. And for those that don't want to live in an apartment, don't want to live way outside of town, it makes a lot of sense for young families and students and, and, and young people who are just entering the workplace. So that's the product we developed. We developed, um, primarily around the Nashville markets, we're a Nashville-based company. I know there's a lot of big national home developers operating in White House and honestly, I've dreamt around and I've seen some product that doesn't, that wouldn't make me happy either. And I know it's hard to separate Elmington from the rest of the people, especially the big national developers, but I really do feel like we're a different company. Uh, and I feel like we, we developed a really nice product. Each time I've come before you guys, the, the, the package has been a little bit different. We've tried to incorporate your feedback into our site plan and into our development plan. Uh, most recently, the last time we were here, we talked about what's to be done with Raymond Hirsch Parkway, whether it should be a parkway and tree lined and a, a healthy buffer should exist there or if it should, uh, contain some commercial. And I thought we made ourselves pretty clear, we would do either of those things. Uh, Ms. Eller, Paula Eller, was very outspoken about the buffer and we thought that that sentiment was shared. So we increased the buffer from our last plan, which I think should thirty to forty feet, depending on where you are on Raymond Hirsch, to, um, you know, an average now of about a hundred feet, up to a hundred and sixty-five, a hundred and seventy feet in some places where we're, uh, maintaining the stream. So the, the reason why we're back here is before, is because before we wanted to go in front of Boma, we wanted to come in front of planning commission or alert you of the changes so you all can be informed. We did increase the buffer, we did reduce the unit count on Raymond Hirsch Parkway to help with that buffer. And we did take out a few. And we did take out a few units that were in direct sightline, a few buildings. About ten units that were in the direct sightline of our neighbor, um, to try and be respectful of these women and their mother. We've also added the, I think we added clarity on the sidewalks, which was a big, um, point of discussion in our last meeting, so I wanted to make sure that was pointed out. And, uh, yeah, I mean, this is a, this is an important piece of, of property in White House. It's a, it's in the core of the city. It's, you know, in my opinion, it's crucial to figure this one out and do it the right way. We spend a lot of our time reading comprehensive plans and what they outline, um, and what they think about when thinking of the, the growth of these cities. A comprehensive plan has this parcel slated, this mixed use, which essentially is, is commercial and high-density, um, high-density housing. So, when we initially met with Seajus, um, we discussed what we wanted to put here, how it would fit in the community. And at that point, it actually sounded like there was, uh, support for more density than we're suggesting now, but we've since refreshed that back to about a hundred and twenty-five units. So, yeah, I, I understand development fatigue. I will say a lot of it is for sale. Um, and if you go to any of these apartment buildings, they're a hundred percent full. And, you know, it's, it's our opinion that people deserve to, to live in a nice place, they can afford, they don't have to be pushed to ask for some town if they can't afford to buy a house in the center of it.
Stick around, we might have some questions.
Okay.
So Tim and Dolly, just, uh, this was, this tonight is a recommendation to the Board Mayor. Of course, we don't make a final determination on the name of the neighborhood, so we're just reviewing this. I know it's a couple of history to it, you all have been involved in it with the maintenance, particularly the view of it. There was questions about the, the open spaces design along bypass versus a commercial component. So we'll just open up for any comment. The design, the revised design, basically.
Can I answer that question? Yeah, yeah, so it will all be rented and what we manage each one of our developments, we sit on the board of each HOA. So, uh, when we develop a property, if it's developed for rentals, every single unit will be rental, but maintained to a very nice standard. And it actually, um, if it was a for-sale development, individuals could buy different pieces of property, not rent them. What you do see is, um, a lot of individuals who own end up renting their homes. And then you don't have an HOA to make sure it's maintained, um, to a certain standard. And then actually, at that point, it becomes, you know, more of an eyesore.
Do you have a full-time manager on site?
Uh, for this project, yes, we would.
Full-time?
Yeah. Full-time manager, full-time maintenance, um, you know, we take care of all the yard space, the amenities, the pool, the clubhouse, we do all that stuff. And there's no additional HOA fee to the, um, to the renter. It's, it's all just worked into what they pay.
And Seajus, do you want to explain our comprehensive plan, what the destination of this area is?
So, the comprehensive plan, this is at White House Cross Road. So, um, initially, you know, when I started and, and I think the comprehensive plan has just been complete. So, uh, it's from, I wanna say from Calista all the way to Raymond Hirsch Parkway. Uh, if you look at the shading, I think she had an illustration of it, you know, it's red. And so we were looking to create an actual town center, uh, with the, the, the main project being across the street at thirty-one W and seventy-six Vice College Street. Uh, and then we were looking to drive the density in the center of town, creating a more walkable, walkable space. So, um, that's sort of, you know, where this piece fits, you know, uh, in that based on my recommendation, was the fact that, you know, it was part of, you know, within the comprehensive class scope.
So I believe the, the sort of plan was for the, like, say, the.
The center of town. Well, the center from, from Raymond Hirsch thirty-one W to, uh, Calista, uh, along thirty-one W. But, you know, creating that walkable community, you know, rather than having the density at the, on the outside of town, driving it all from the center of town.
So you got the impression that, in talking with Paula?
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I don't, y'all may want me off this in about thirty minutes because I've only been on it about thirty minutes. So, you know, you might relieve me before the night's over. From your point of view, y'all gotta earn income from what you do.
Sure.
That, you, you say that's not the main thing, but we.
We're a business, yes.
Uh, and that's fine. We, well, I think, I know I want the property owners, when they get ready to sell what they have, I wanna see them get what they, the best they can get for what they have. And the highest use of what the property is. I think in reading the, uh, the letter from, uh, uh, the ladies that, that, uh, their mom is still in her home. I think there can be concessions made and things done to, to make her comfortable. It looks to me like, in looking at this, I mean, it, this is all one, one issue at a time in looking at this project. But it looks to me like there's a tremendous amount of roadrunneries right in the dead center of the community that, uh, is being, it would not be used for its highest use. I don't know how far back you'd have to go, this frontage on Raymond Hirsch Parkway, uh, from a seller's point of view, might not be today, but not awful far down the road will be of more value as commercial property. Okay? Uh, and that cuts down on what you folks are trying to do now. I guess you'd, at that, you'd have to look at it as, okay, how many units can we have? And then how long would it take us to recoup our profit or whatever with commercial property? But it, it just kinda looks like it's a waste of some of the best frontage in, in our community.
Yes, uh.
They have said something.
Yeah.
One thing that I did not say, and I should've said when I was up here a moment ago, the sellers were not able to attend. Austin, her husband, has had a heart attack.
Yeah.
And, um, she's very upset about it, obviously, and they had to go back to the hospital today. But I wanted to let you know, cause they had every intention of being here for the meeting.
Well, from my point of view, I, I know of the family and of the people and, and, uh, they don't need to be here for me.
Right, but I just wanted to let you know that.
See, it's gonna be interesting.
Well, that's been my thing all along. We're running out of commercial on, on seventy-six. This is ideal, Raymond Hirsch Parkway is that bypass.
I agree.
Perfect place for commercial. And we've got, Cliff, we're at fifty-four hundred homes have been approved, it hasn't even been started yet, about fifty-three total units. And this type of product, we still have, uh, don't, don't, uh, we can't remember exactly, but around thirteen hundred units probably remain to be built.
Of the four rented townhomes?
And this, this type, multifamily, multifamily.
Right, so that, I would call that a little bit of a different product than what we're developing.
And I, I personally, I'm not gonna vote to change the zoning on anything else right now, especially on, from rental, until we get a grip on what we've got going. You know, and I've come here, I've been here, and I'm gonna stay here. And, you know, it's just, I voted for a lot of things, but I think it's time now to slow down. As far as the, uh, project, if you're looking for a project, this is a good looking project.
Thank you.
You're, you're, like you said in the past, it's timing and everything. But, you know, we're saying, good to work with you, done everything we've asked, and the extra buffers, everything like that, but.
So is there a concept out there that you would support at this point?
With thirteen hundred units still to be built, it comes out.
When are they gonna be built?
Cause I can't tell you that.
See.
When is yours gonna be built?
But is ours gonna be built?
As soon as we close on it, they'll start.
So when we, so our process is when we get a grading permit, we close the next day and we stick a shovel in the day after that. So, we'd probably look to start construction here, um, first, the new, uh, end of this year. Um, and again, I mean, we're a Nashville developer, we're local, we do what we say. We build a really good product, you know? I, I, I was driving around the, the neighborhood, um, before I came in here, and I, I understand your concern. There's a lot going on. Tyree Springs, I mean, I know Doris Farms is, is blowing and going, and there's a lot of dirt being moved. Again, I, I do think that we're kinda separate from thirteen hundred multifamily units that are being developed. When you think about not being able to afford a home, being forced to do an apartment building, versus having your own driveway, garage, two-car garage to drive into, it's different. Um, and that's why our product's been so successful.
So is there any openness on the board to having a re, if you, if you make seventeen acres commercial, even though we're growing and, and really quickly, I'm looking at it from seller's point of view again. And I, I'm, I'm a realtor, I'm a realtor on my adult life, so I, I'm looking at runway use. This frontage here would make, it wouldn't take forever to get itself and get some, some commercial endeavors on it. It, it might take twenty, twenty-five years to get all this soaked-up commercial seventeen acres inside. Because it's a full, you know, it's a full commercial effort in, in, uh.
Now, at, at one point, we did, I think in the last meeting, we did talk about, okay, do we want the parkway as a parkway with the tree line and the buffer, or do we want commercial? You know, I think, I think there's room to put commercial in there, but then you lose a tree line. Um, and I will say, the way the topography slopes on the property and the way the stormwater falls, it does make commercial frontage there more challenging to develop. So. But there, there's a path that you could point us down. We would love to try and accommodate what you guys want and what you, what the city needs.
Yeah, I, that's what I'm hearing. And, but if, but if there, and I, again, I just got here and it'll be okay to leave, don't matter. Uh, but if there's a majority here that says, uh, we don't want, we don't want this to happen, or anything like this to happen, then now's probably the time to go ahead and get it said and, and, uh, shoot these folks in the head and send them all down to five and something like that.
Well, that's the thing for this board.
Did you hear that?
We're a, a planning advisory board. We try, we always gotta remember, we're not, we're not elected people in the city. So I, I think we look at from the plan, what's the best for the actual property. If this property, ideal solution for this property, what would it be? Timing of it, if we don't feel like the city's got too much, that's more of a political issue than actually.
Mixed use, uh, I've seen several projects. I hadn't seen any of your mixed-use design projects. I think of Franklin, uh, that, that comes to mind, um, or Thompson Station, and we may have talked about that at one time, where it has the Publix, if everything's uniform.
And in our plan, we would, the street would connect to the Publix development. And then the corner was purchased by a, a gas station developer, who I think is local. So the idea is that, there's gonna be commercial on either of our flanks, and then we would have connectivity with the infrastructure and provide the multifamily, single-family.
You, you referring to the, the commercial for the.
Yeah, I think that was purchased in two thousand and eighteen.
And then the, I guess, the other development.
Yeah. Right, and that, and so between the Publix and what they're doing, what we're doing in the corner, then you do have, you know, holistically, it's a mixed-use development.
I think, uh, and I don't wanna speak for the board, but I think that if this project would have came, uh, complete with the Publix, uh, if there was uniformity, I think it adds a different complexity to the, to the overall project. But just seeing the multifamily may pose a challenge.
Right.
Some in there, if I'm, if I'm summarizing.
Yeah, I mean, it's not a thirty-five, forty-acre piece of property, so, you know, it's hard to fit a Publix and your townhomes and your infrastructure and your stormwater all in one parcel. It's just a sort of math problem at that point. But, I mean, if, if commercial along the frontage is, is the direction y'all wanna go, I mean, that, that, it's something we could, um, look at. I've just never gotten really a clear point of direction on what everyone, everybody wants to see.
Well, last month, I mean, last, not last month, but last week, we talked about commercial on either side of the main drive coming in. Cause our, he's right, there is some drainage issues down toward, you know, the lower end there. But I mean, not to be, they would not be big, it'd be more of a service little shop. Kinda like Papa John's is, like, sitting next to it.
I think the town center, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the town center design, uh, is, is what I'm thinking of. And I can't think of right off the top of my head how many acres that is across the street. But there's a general concept that I have pretty to, to look at. I think that would be something that would be more favorable, if I'm, I'm hearing it right, and I'm not making a promise of saying anything to them. But this is a, a mixed-use scope of, of, of living and work.
Okay.
Space, more of a, that walkability, not just the townhomes, not just the retail, but just an actual community feel. Something different than we have now, I think is, is how I can summarize that.
Right, so, okay, so residential, commercial, and you said, and work?
Just that work-life walkable, uh, product, not just, and I know you, you said the sixteen acres and I, and I did that. But I think, again, I'm summarizing, uh.
Okay.
I might want more comment for the group that's no-growth, I understand. When I came to White House with my family, as little kids, there was not even a caution light in town. So if we, we would sit on the hoods of our cars as teenagers and, and race and drink beer right in front of this building out here on the sidewalk from the section of seventy-six up to the second road of the cemetery, until the local constable from somewhere would come and confiscate our beer and send us home. It's a different place. Uh, to, the, the no-growth thought is, you have to be brave if it can stop. Keep in mind that there's a tremendous amount of stuff that every time that the Publix is coming. Publix is coming because we grew to a point to where Publix could come. We'll grow some more to a point where another nice restaurant will come and, and everybody will be pretty tickled to see those things come. Those things are gonna happen. Uh, so, yeah, it'd be great if we could shut it all down for a while. But look at every aspect of it and keep it all in mind, cause there's more than, uh, there's a million ways to look at it. And the people that own these properties, they may have owned them for years and years and years and years. And if you own these properties, you would welcome at the right time to get the right price for it. So, hard to, life all runs down the middle.
I totally agree with you. But I think we've.
But you still don't want that.
I think we've got too much started right now, we need to slow down.
I understand.
And I think it's better.
Let me ask, have any of you been on this piece of property? It's the most majestic piece of property you will ever walk on in your life. And it was settled by slaves. So it is a very, very special piece of property. And these guys wanna do something really nice and whatever, you know, we're just trying to figure out what is the best thing. Because I'm afraid that Austin's not gonna be here much longer. And they, he wants his wife to have this and have for it to close and move forward. And it's gonna be an asset to your city.
Any additional comments? I guess we'll go for a motion.
Thank you for your, your patience with me, I appreciate it.
I'll make the motion in a minute. So we got a motion to, now, this is a recommendation to the Board Mayor and Alderman. So we got a motion, Doris, to deny, we got a second? Motion, a second to deny, um, let's do it.
I guess we're perming the roll call, or show of hands.
No, we're, we're denying the rezoning.
Recommendation to the Board Mayor.
He can still, the Board Mayor Alderman can still review it, we're an advisory role on this, on this board.
So for the denial, show, show hands if you're voting for the denial.
So they can come back still with this, though, they can, if they want to and they've got the courage to, they can come back with a new idea and start all over, right?
Or they're gonna go before they have all the. They can go anywhere.
Okay.
Yeah, we're just advisory on this. So we got, show your hands again, if you don't care.
This is for the motion to deny.
Yes.
I, I, like we talked about before, I feel like of all the properties where there's density, this one's more appropriate for it. I agree with Seajus, if it was a, a more development, like a true mixed use, I think that's what this property, I think that's.
I agree with Seagus, if it was a, a more development, like a true mixed-use, I think that's, that's what this property, I think that's the best use for it. So the density, to me, doesn't bother me in this location, as it does, there are some other areas where I think it's problematic, so.
All right, so that, that could go before the Board Mayor and Alderman's. That was, uh, unanimously. Uh, number five, uh, Seagus, you can kick this off. This is a zoning ordinance amendment for development standards for campground.
Yes. Um, we had a study session last, uh, last month with, uh, Mr. Tommy Cox, who had purchased the land known as the Old Golf Court. Uh, he pointed out some things, uh, that we had in our existing, um...
Ordinance.
Uh, that wasn't in tune with other campgrounds across the country, uh, and I did some research on that. Uh, one of the things, you know, as I turned to it, um, one of the things was the hundred-and-eighty day, uh, we had thirty days minimal stay, um, and that's just not a standard, uh, as I researched and looked across the country on these campgrounds. Uh, the average I found was a hundred-and-eighty days. I think someone on the board mentioned that, you know, if you limit it to thirty days, all they do is transition to another campground. Uh, from, from what I gather, and I, I spoke with, uh, Alderman Hudson, he had a question about tent sites and a hundred-and-eighty days. So that is some language that I, I can put in there, uh, you know, that no-tent camping for a hundred-and-eighty days, that was, um, and I agree with him on that. Also, uh, there was, uh, the square footage of the campsite was thirty-two-hundred square feet. Uh, I did some research, and the, the standard is sixteen, one thousand six hundred and fifty square feet per campsite. Uh, so I made that change, uh, as to be a recommendation to the Board of Mayor and Alderman. Uh, also, uh, as it related to the, uh, materials that the vehicles drive home, uh, I spelled out some, some language on that to add some specificity to, to, uh, the design of the, uh, park site itself. Um, again, in addition, the, the hundred-and-eighty days, uh, that was standard, uh, and bathhouses, we had a, uh, we had in our bath, uh, in our, um, original language, it states that a bathhouse has to be, uh, three-hundred feet within a unit. Well, the, the standard language is three-hundred feet, uh, if there is a unit that doesn't have, uh, the sewer hookups. So, uh, that's tent camping, you know, you don't have to be a bathhouse in front of trailers and tents. Uh, so I, I added that language to be more specific in there as well. So those are the changes that I made, uh, based on some research that I did, uh, to that.
Seagus, are we still requiring, like, the tractor dealerships out here to have their equipment that sets out to be sold, to be on, uh, concrete, concrete or asphalt?
Yeah, the display, it, it, uh, we did, we changed some language to the display, uh, information. So, uh, there are some street guy, uh, sport displays, is that what you're asking, by outdoor display?
Outdoor display, so we're gonna make a guy that's gonna sell a car or tractor for his, uh, tractor or car on concrete. Why are we not having the, uh, fucking, like, asphalt in the roads inside the, the other asphalt?
This is sort of in line with our, uh, with our design standards, uh, with, with driving the surface. It is a, uh, industrial, um, site. So the drive aisle has to be, um, has to be paid, anything in drive lane. Uh, this was some standard language that I found, uh, the month.
But the slip where the camper's gonna be sitting on is not gonna be...
It'll have to be, yeah, dusted. It can, it can be, uh, dusted, but we can make that change.
I'm just, I'm just asking, you know, I like to see one person, if one man has to do it, then we'll kinda get a quarter for someone else.
Yeah, but I don't think you wanna, our new businesses in the town center to have, uh, asphalt, um, I mean, gravel, uh, displaying merchandise versus, uh, this site to where they're really used to, this is, like I said, sort of the standard.
It's like, it's like the main drive aisle's being concrete, but where they actually park the, part of the heat.
I had a...
Touch the stormwater, Jay.
What about animals, you know, on a leash? I thought about that, you know, if I'm an older person, I love animals, I'm like, I know.
I think our city ordinance, our municipal code, uh, is required by code, so.
The hundred-and-eighty days, someone could say there are a hundred and eighty consecutive days.
Yeah, within twelve, twelve months, that was...
So you got, you got, uh...
It's not gonna be Millersville.
Well, that's, that's, how, how much, do we know how much it'll cost to rent a tent space?
I don't, but I don't think he's gonna have any tent spaces in this particular park. His goal is to bring money with the, from what he, from what he said.
So if you're gonna do that, it's gonna need to be written in here that tent camping.
For a hundred-and-eighty day, uh, yeah. For a thirty-day minimum tent camping, uh, really?
Maximum.
Yeah, maximum, yeah.
That's a long, thirty days in a tent is a long time.
But it, it could be pretty great if you've been living in your car.
I, I think six days, six months is a long time.
We don't want, uh, boy, you know, we're on the island, I'm telling you. We don't want people up here camping in that park as the next level up from living in a car. Not that I wanna punish folks, but we want to, uh, oh, hey, let's, hey, get your car to the White House, we can live in the... That, when I was, uh, uh, like I said, what I was told, um, you know, based on, and I didn't do this based on what he's basing his, uh, campground. This came to be because we didn't have any standards in place, so that was the reasoning for, um, you know, adding on with the year. So, um, it was nothing, so they came six months ago and tried to do this. There was nothing that even was...
Do we have some stick on the, uh, pads?
For, on the pads or?
Or like a compaction or a thickness, amount of gravel? But I'm saying, I don't want something that your employer camping there, it's a rainy day, or something that's gonna hold up.
I can, I can refer to our sub-rings, so, because this is what it'll do, it'll, it'll mimic what's in our sub-rings, myself.
I think it'd be useful, like, a properly compacted, I had, I think, that, you know, the four or six acts can, for people to get primed and, and... You have a lot of ideas that, well, it's a standard.
Then how many, how many different units, how many different camping entities can be there at one time?
So this is a, um, ten acre, I mean, this is about twelve acres, uh, and they have to have, I think it's gonna be about a hundred and ten units.
You ever been down to Albridge?
Yeah, I mean, I think...
Here's, here's the thing, uh, so the, this is a permitted use. So, uh, given that it's already in our zoning ordinance, we have, uh, in, the scope of this is to make it as, as nice as possible without having, uh, Albridge or something like that. So that's the intent of, uh, uh, retaining this, you know, this language.
Jim, can you speak to this? I, I'm pretty ignorant. Well, I know this, but, uh... Get the smartest on your brain, if you don't mind. Tell us what your guys, I mean, do you, can we go somewhere and see something that, that maybe that, I mean, here for a moment?
Well, y'all, y'all are talking negative about just one little thing there, and it's tents. We've got a lot of soccer happening in White House, Tennessee.
Okay.
And the people travel a long ways with them kids to play soccer. There's some of those families that can't afford a big, nice motorhome and stuff of that nature.
Yeah.
And, and that campground may have some tents in it, if, if it's not restricted, and they'd be bunches of young little boys and girls sitting out there on the campground. In which if, if you was driving two or three hundred miles and had stayed there for a week...
Couldn't ruin them up there, yeah.
You know, but I'm not speaking for the owner of this property, the man who bought this property, but that's something you might oughta look at.
And I, I shouldn't, but my mind goes to the worst case, and anything better than that would be, you know, but, and I, like, again, I've been here now forty-five minutes instead of thirty minutes, so, um, yeah, yeah, what, okay.
Is your big concern the time limit, the, the six, six months?
Yeah, I, I just hate for somebody to, um, to come up here from, you see, it sounds so awful, of course, with the snap of a finger, I could be living on the bridge, too.
We can, I can, and I, I, I'll put some language in here to, to limit the amount of time for tent camping.
Amount of time and percentage of campground can only be so many percent.
Well, is it urgent we go on this tonight? We can get through to send Mr. Board Mayor Alderman, and I think that's like a little direction. We're having a lot of suggestions. Can we not postpone this the next weekend, and you get all that language put together? I don't hear you says file bus lot, cause it's kind of nippy, says, I think, what I did, but I ain't...
Yeah, uh, so we had the study session, and I didn't get any, uh, feedback.
I'm just saying, well, you can get all these suggestions, and before we send it, I think, I personally would like to say something more concrete. And I, I'm sorry, I was one of them, I did not hear any.
So the language already exists in our, our ordinance, uh, and, and you can see where I did the strike through. So that's what's already in our ordinance, is thirty days, you know, uh, square foot is thirty-two-hundred, yeah, and I'm okay with, uh, you know, postponing it.
Well, I'm just one, I'm just one.
The only concern I have is just the time limit. I think six months. I know that the intention of these are, you know, these are quarter-million-dollar RVs, or, they're very popular, and even the cheaper ones, they're still a hundred, a thousand, so... The quality's there, it's just the time limit, I don't think that... We were kinda looking at it like a hotel. This is like a different kind of hotel, but, I mean, you don't live at a hotel for six months, so, I mean, really, the, the length of time is not big.
Age in RVs ought to be, I think, regulated, too.
Well, it, you know, was coming there, they couldn't use old, have old RVs, and I thought, well, that's pretty rough. Well, we don't want to jump that every thirty days to the spot with this community, and that, that, that's what we're trying to avoid, and I think that, you know, in our thirty-day rule, they could just, I mean, keep moving. And they're in there for five years, and they're just moving, you know, that's what we don't want, is he just came up with this other language to try and limit them in its former period because probably time they could be there. I mean, that could be regulated, obviously, by the owner, and you challenge him to try to regulate. If they regulate them, I wonder what it costs. That's gonna be regulated.
And he said, cause his, his expense is gonna be pretty high, but that's, you know, that's up to him, you know, but for somebody to stay there that long, they're gonna pay out some money, it's like, how about the fifteen hundred a month?
Are we out of, are we out of line to, to find out what it costs to be there and write it in there that that's, it's not less than X?
Yeah, hopefully we can do that.
Seagus, tweak this thing some.
Yeah, let's know, you know, what we should put in there.
We have a motion to defer. Make a motion to defer. Motion second to defer. All in favor, say aye? Pose? Number six, another zoning ordinance amendment recommendation to the Board Mayor and Alderman regarding residential planning developments, development design.
Yes, so this language was in the, uh, in the PUD, the Design and Development Standards, until two thousand eight, after two thousand seven, two thousand eight. It was very restrictive, and developers were having a hard time with their plans. Uh, this changes, um, you know, right now, everything seems to look the same, you ride through neighborhoods, um, garages are all, um, you know, front-loaded. So this language added back in, again, already was in there once, so what it does is it adds a percentage of rear-loaded garages, side-loaded garages, uh, and the percentages are also listed in here.
And also...
It put, I, I also, um, didn't know if we wanted to do it in alternative density design, so I didn't put it in that design, but...
Like your, like, uh, clustered town.
So that may be something, uh, to consider, um, but I was asked to, to look at this. Also, there's some language, uh, in our design, um, and it doesn't explicitly, explicitly say it in our, um, ordinance, but I added back, uh, all building foundations, including front, side, rear wall. That's the brick and grade standard. I just wanted to spell that out. And we always, you know, mention that, uh, in our development, but, um, thought we'd add that back in. Um, and, um, also in our, our design standard, uh, in the PUD guidance, uh, I added the, uh, parking orientation and layout for sitting of garages. I think this would, would get us, um, away from the standard of what we used to, you know, see in just, you know, house, house, house. Uh, it, it addresses the recessed garage, because you know how garages, um, tend to be presented to sit back off the, uh, street and off the, off the elevation, just to kinda mix it up and change it up. But I was asked, uh, by the Alderman to, to look at adding this language back in, so that's why I sent it.
So that would actually add a turn radius on each lot? Or, what, let's say the turn radius for a car is gonna be...
My head got raised.
It's, they're running, everything's being built with a front garage, everything, and, and you're riding down the street and it's same, same, same thing. Yeah, this way, it'll break it back up and, and actually widen some lots, because you have to have turn radius to get into your garage. Normally, how many, more feet you'll add to a lot, but...
I'll have thirty feet.
One question, uh, I was asked was about alley load, and I know we have thirty-five-foot setback, uh, but I had been asked by a developer about, you know, alley design in the driveway, I s- you know, I said you could offset that in the rear of the property, that thirty-five-foot driveway, uh, in the rear, and then that, uh, you know, what's known as the front could offset that, uh, setback, if that makes sense.
Yeah, usually your alley load, the house will be right on the front street.
Yeah.
And all your sidewalks are on the front, so you really don't have to worry about...
Six yards, alley load is gonna bring your, closing your front yard by how many feet?
I mean, they're usually within five to ten feet, and that's the road, or the edge of the property. Cause there, those developments, it's all about how it looks along the street. If your lots are narrow, or you got more of them, but it's the back end is where the, the cars mark and the... It's a different type of design. If y'all have seen Doral Farms in Intercityville, you know, the frontage road has the alley loaded. It's just getting bright. They don't have to do that, or they could do the other stuff, it's just...
It's the variety, yeah.
Just see one of them, you know, they had the rear, had the rear, and the house is actually backed up.
Mm-hmm, yeah, so it's like, that's where your driveway is? You don't have to worry, so you don't have to worry about blocking the sidewalk.
Yeah.
Cause the sidewalk's not back there. It's just a different...
And they just curved it, that road there, there's some curves on it, that's it. It just gets them down.
Basically, it's telling them that this is standard old, same old, same old, same old. And you go through Orchard Park, some divisions like that, coming in, you figure lots, but there's variety in how the houses, some courtyard, some, uh, side-loaded.
Makes it harder. Get a plan to fit a forty, fifty-foot wide lot, and it not be different than the same.
Yeah, it's, it's...
They all curry, cookie cutter, you know.
But I think we're at this point here, I was just saying, we're at the point now with the growth that we can afford to, um, you know, change it up and give it a true PUD.
Be hooked up.
All right, any other questions? You're coming in? We go for a motion?
Sorry, I just was gonna make a comment about items, the final item, that was also asked by the Alderman to add the increase to the, uh, the bond, uh, percentage, uh, to seven percent. That was the standard increase of inflation, uh, seven percent would put us at thirteen percent. But we'll advertise that for public hearing. It's just not being at thirteen, I don't know if I should be fourteen just for a good luck number, but... I mean, but...
Economy's undecided right now.
I mean, we could add a two-percent increase on top of it, and make it, so I'll get that public hearing advertised next month and, uh, get that back in for you. So, next month's meeting, uh, little, little more growth, uh, add a couple of plans, a couple of PUDs, uh, that you've seen before. Uh, those, those come before you, first read, it's come, basically, put it back, yeah.
So I'm number six. We do have a motion to approve. We need a second. Let me get this wrapped up. Motion second, all in favor, say aye? Pose? I would say, from a planning vision standpoint, it's like every month, it's one, uh, I'm trying to think a good way to put it. Controversy after another, uh, it's almost like all we're doing is reacting, we don't, I don't feel like we're really, like, we're just got our back to the wall, really. And I think it'd be good, upcoming agenda, to have times on the agenda where we could talk about future growth. There's some items, discuss the night and the... In the public hearing, you know, it might be something the city look for, you know, we don't, for current elected, we don't make those political decisions, but just talk about the city's long-term growth, it's like we're just being pushed.
Would you like to see, like, that project list? I, I've made it available to the, uh, Board of Mayor and Alderman, uh, and then some citizens also have. So I think it'd be a good idea, we can start putting any of the packet, uh, just have some general discussion of what's coming.
Do they still do this word on White House, the paper?
Yes.
The project list, could the project list not be in that, because that is less, you know, at least the idea that, well, it is being thought of. I think the, the thought is that, well, nobody's giving any thought to any of that, they're just... I think the, the thought is that, well, nobody's giving any thought to any of that, they're just slinging, you know.
Sure, I can, I can, I can get that.
Like I honestly see, if we built twenty-five thousand homes next month, people would move in. I don't think that's a problem, it's just some kind of balance.
Go for it.
Yeah, I, uh, had a conversation with Ms. Taylor, we talked one hour today, we probably talked an hour last week, and I told her that their comments are, are well thought out and well received. I mean, like, for instance, with the public hearing, I think the city, we had done public hearings and we stopped doing it. So, I, I told her, you know, I personally don't see us, uh, you know, necessarily reacting, but, you know, uh, trying to, you know, let the citizens know that we're listening to them, because if we don't get anybody saying anything, then, you know, we just kinda, kinda go as fast as possible. So, I, I think it's a good thing that we have public comments and opposition, so, that's just my opinion.
Alright, was the time changed or not? Any other questions, before we adjourn? Alright, we're adjourned, thank you.